Buenas en Hafa Day. The Committee on Health and Veterans Affairs is now called to order. The time is now 9:04 in the morning. It is Thursday, July 17, 2025. Thank you all for being here, whether you're joining us in person or tuning in from home or online. We know everyone's busy and we appreciate you taking the time to be a part of today's confirmation hearing. This morning, we are here to consider the nomination of Meli Niemandjola to serve on the Board of Trustees of the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority. If confirmed, Ms. Niemandjola will serve a six-year term helping to guide our only public hospital, an institution that is absolutely vital to the health and well-being of our island. Ms. Niemandjola was appointed by Governor Lillian Guerrero on June 25th. As soon as the nomination hit our desks, the committee got to work right away. We scheduled this hearing quickly because, quite frankly, when it comes to GMH, time is of the essence. We can all agree that the hospital needs strong, steady leadership sooner rather than later. Proper notice of today's hearing was shared with our colleagues, stakeholders, and the media on July 10th, and then again on July 15th, in compliance with the open government law. You'll also find today's materials online or available in hard copy if needed, and the full hearing will be uploaded to the Guam Legislature's YouTube channel for those following along later. Before we begin, I'd like to recognize the members of the committee who are present today, Senator Sean Guma Tautau, as well as Senator Vince Pora. I'd also like to welcome Senator Therese Terlahe. To all of you, thank you again for taking time to be here. As we move along, just a friendly reminder that each senator will have five minutes to ask the nominee any questions. Before we hear from Ms. Niemandjola herself, we'll open up the floor to public testimony, so if anybody would like to provide a testimony and support or opposition of Ms. Niemandjola's nomination, please come to the table. To make sure that everybody can hear you, along with everybody online and us up here on the dais, if you could, please speak clearly and closely into the microphone. You may proceed.
Thank you, and good morning. Buenas. My name is Lillian Perez Basadas. I am the hospital administrator, and so it is with great honor and joy to present this letter of recommendation and support for Ms. Melanie Niemandjola on her appointment to serve as a member of the Guam Memorial Hospital Board of Trustees. I know and have worked closely with Ms. Niemandjola since 2019, when she was appointed to serve as the Administrator/CEO for the Guam Economic and Development Authority, known as GIDA. Throughout these years, I have had many one-on-one interactions and opportunities to confidently testify without any hesitation at all that Ms. Niemandjola possesses the attributes and characteristics of an astute, ethical, and exceptional leader. In her role as the GIDA Administrator/CEO, Ms. Niemandjola was quite innovative and successful in garnering funds that benefited numerous agencies and entities, both in the government of Guam and in the private sector. Ms. Niemandjola's vast experience, sound business, and leadership and management attributes would definitely be an asset for GMHA's governance. I think I can speak for many who know and have worked with Ms. Niemandjola that she has the incredible talent to articulate her insights and thoughts constructively, reasonably, and strategically. So, I do, on behalf of the hospital, I truly support Ms. Niemandjola's appointment to serve as a trustee, and we're really looking forward to working with her. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Basadas. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak on Ms. Niemandjola's nomination? If not, Melanie, if you could please come to the table. I also wanted to make note that we did receive written testimony and support of your nomination from Sharon Davis, as well as Komiya Dierking, and they will be uploaded to the Google Drive and included in the committee report. Thank you, Melanie, for accepting the appointment to serve on the GMH Board of Trustees, which it is no small task. It's a serious commitment that requires both heart and grit. It means dealing with tough decisions, limited resources, and the weight of knowing the community is counting on you. So, on behalf of the committee and the people of Guam, thank you for stepping up. And you may proceed with your testimony.
Hafa Day and good morning, Madam Chair and members of the committee. Thank you, Ms. Lil, for that beautiful testimony. My name is Melanie Niemandjola, and I'd like to thank everyone for taking the time today to hold today's hearing for my confirmation as a member of the Board of Trustees of the Guam Memorial Hospital. I think I'll start by sharing a little bit about my personal background, as we do. I'm a daughter of Guam. My parents are both deceased. Their names were Frederico Wilbacher Niemandjola and Sylvia Blas Niemandjola. Like the speaker, I am Familian Deru, and my mom's only living sister, Sue Carbelito, joins us here today with her husband, my uncle Ben. I live in Paget, Manila, across the yard from my brother Fred Niemandjola and his wife May, my nephew Noah, who are also here today. My brother owns Lotus Surf Shop down in Tuman. Please check them out. Tourism works. I live with my partner Raymond Cruz Perez. He's the son of Difuntu Joe, Mr. Joe Perez, and Ms. Vicky Perez, who's also here today. And he is the brother of Jay, Roseanne, Temmo, Aaron, and Avise Perez. He is the father of my sweet girls Jenny Rose and Izzy, and he is also the reason I have the time and the capacity to serve in roles such as this. I grew up, I spent my life in Paget, save for when I graduated from college after graduating from the Academy of Our Lady of Guam in 1999. I went to the, I left to attend New York University, and I graduated in 2003 with dual majors in economics and East Asian Studies and a business minor. I worked in New York in finance for a few years before I moved home to work in finance here. I spent approximately 10 years in the private sectors, a financial advisor, a lender, a retirement counselor for companies, including HSBC Bank in New York, Merrill Lynch, Bank of America, and Empower Retirement Services. In 2012, my sister Jenny and I started a not-for-profit called Farm to Table Guam. My role was merely to provide grant writing and backup support to my sister, but she unexpectedly passed in 2013, and so I took the reins and built it to a sustainable organization that still supports farmers and puts their goods on the dinner table, and it's under the leadership of my dear friends Cassie Brady and Roland Santos and Thalia Gange. Around the same time, I was at Farm to Table. I picked up a couple degrees, an MBA from the University of Guam and a Master's of Science in Financial Planning from Kansas State University. I didn't have kids back then, you know, so I had time. And then in 2017, I was appointed as Executive Director of the UOG Endowment Foundation, where my colleagues and I established the G is Forgiving Campaign, an annual campaign that has provided over $1 million in funding and scholarships to the university. My first appearance here at the legislature was in 2016 in the Calvo administration, when I was appointed to the Board of the Port Authority of Guam. Later in 2019, I appeared again, this time for the role of Administrator and CEO of the Guam Economic Development Authority. So, so far, I'm two for two. I'm hoping we can make it three for three, but it's up to you. And when I think back to Governor Leon Guerrero and Lieutenant Governor Tenorio taking a chance on me at GIDA, I'm extremely grateful. Governor Leon Guerrero and Lieutenant Governor Tenorio knew that I leaned more conservative and Republican, but despite our differing views, we built what I believe to be an agency of which leaders on both sides of the aisle could be proud. At the time, I would describe GIDA's finances as bipolar. One year, there would be a windfall, then there would be a loss, and then another, and then another. It was like a box of chocolates. You really never knew what you were going to get. GIDA also received a bad audit on its community contribution funds from the qualifying certificate. The relationship between the agency and the legislature was fractured, and we had around six pending litigations. And these are a few of the issues that lingered and spilled into 2019. As a government newbie, I was not exactly sure how to take on an organization that did not really generate sufficient funds to keep it sustainable year after year. In the private sector, you're in the red for a certain amount of time before you cut the cord, or the cord gets cut for you. But in government, it amazed me that GIDA still operated at the same levels, budget levels, after multiple years of losses. But bigger than that, there was really a negative perception of stakeholders of this really critical agency of the government of Guam, including the media, the general public, and the legislature. Ultimately, I thought this was a big communication problem. So, early on, we sought to create an environment where the board meeting was the focal point of communicating out progress month by month. The board meeting was everything for me. Every month, we were marching towards what we would report, the progress we could report to the public at the board meeting. My revenue strategy was to create more predictable streams of revenue, to build up some of the rental income and assist other agencies, such as the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission, to obtain more federal grants, especially to fund efforts for small businesses, and to invest our cash reserves in higher-returning investments. We were well on our way when COVID-19 upended our economy, and as the government's fiscal first responders, myself, Director Byrne from DOA, and Director Carlson from BBMR were tasked with pushing out millions of dollars of direct aid to small businesses affected by the pandemic. While I think back, when I think back to the nights and weekends, our team at GIDA worked to qualify businesses for pandemic aid, it's dizzying. In some total, we pushed out over $100 million through multiple rounds of funding to over 2,000 local businesses. I'd also like to point out, we did not hire any additional staff. In fact, we spent the COVID years cutting expenses. We froze increments because we didn't know what the future was going to hold. Our stakeholders were suffering, and it would be only a matter of time before that trickled down to our agency, was our view, the view of the board and mine. Once other agencies saw that we were pretty, but once other agencies saw that we were pretty adept at running programs like LEAP, they pushed us, they asked us to help them as well. So, most notably, Public Health through Pragman Penilin, where we pushed out another $80 million in aid. One of the most positive permanent outcomes of Pragman Penilin was lifting the ceiling to qualify for reduced childcare. Not only did this provide relief to working parents, both parents either had to be working, seeking work, or going to school in order to qualify for the block grant, but it also created a demand for more childcare centers. It created a demand for more workers, and we were able to support all along that food chain. And this is really the essence of the multiplier effect, leveraging every federal dollar to create five more in our economy. Once pandemic restrictions lifted, we went full throttle, trying to, continuing to try to diversify our economy through initiatives such as our additive manufacturing initiatives and partnering with small agencies, partnering with nonprofits like GUMA to push capital to seed small businesses. I'm really proud of our work at GIDA and have great hopes that under Acting Administrator Tina Garcia, who will be here next week for confirmation, that the organization will flourish even more. A few months ago, I accepted a position as the Director of Investor Education and Guidance at BG Investment Services. It's a wonderful opportunity for me to combine my formal training and experience in financial services with my desire to improve the financial outcomes of our people. I provide traditional wealth management to individuals and institutions and design programs to get individuals to plan for the future. It's great work, and I am happy, though I do miss my colleagues in the government. I believe I share a wall with Senator Guma Tautau's office, in fact, my office on the other side of the wall. So, now back to GMH. Let's get down to it. Some hater on social media a couple days ago asked me the following. "So what qualifies you to sit on the Board of Trustees?" To which my response was, was a wise crack. It was, "Well, if any of you armchair quarterbacks wish to step up, be my guest." And I was having a little fun, but in all seriousness, if we get down to it, what exactly does qualify me to sit on the Board of Trustees at GMH? And I think my main qualification is that I am not afraid to go running into burning buildings. I think we can all agree that GMH has been in the principal's office one too many times, and I'd like to do my part on the board to address challenges before being surprised in board meetings or in an oversight. For me, as a finance person, my priority as a trustee would be to serve as a resource for forward planning versus backward looking. So, if we can all accept that GMH will not be in the black for the foreseeable future, if we're going to be planning for the red, I want to know how much lead time do we have to get prepared and at what levels do we need to get prepared? For example, just last night, I was reviewing their budget, a budget PowerPoint that was provided that said that there was a $21 million gap, and my follow-up question to that was, you know, I know that there were certain assumptions that were keyed into what we're collecting from Medicaid, Medicare, and so on and so forth, but are those assumptions accurate? Or, and also, the timing, the revenue cycle, what is the most negative we will become cash flow-wise, such that they may, the Guam Memorial Hospital, we may say we believe will be $20 million in the red, but over the course of the year, we might get to the point where there's a point where there were like $40 million in the red before collections come in. So, those were sort of my follow-up questions to that. I've done a bit of research, and I found really, just really troubling information out there. From January 2005 to May 2024, 219 rural hospitals closed or converted to a facility without inpatient services, with financial distress cited as the main contributor to closure. This is an article by Doctors Malone, Pink, and Holmes, written in 2024, and I'll leave the journal article with my testimony for your review. 219 rural hospitals in America, like mainland America, where people can drive long distances, where they don't have as many constraints as we have. Just in the, in the discussion of the big, beautiful, President Trump's Big Beautiful Bill, lawmakers in Congress cited a study wherein some 338 hospitals would be at risk of closure with the impending cuts to Medicaid. When I read the news, Trump's Big Beautiful Bill has implications on Medicaid, which represents about one-third of the revenues of GMH from my last, my look at their last audit. There are some gap-filling measures that are being proposed through the Rural Health Fund, but from my experience with grant funding, anytime you have new grant funding, that's great, and it does fill the gaps, but sometimes the lead time is a little bit further out. So, if the cuts are immediate, let's say in the next fiscal year, but the rural health grant funding, which we don't even know if they're grant, if we would be eligible, they may exclude Guam, is two years out. This leaves two years of planning for a source of funding that makes up for 30 cents out of every dollar of the Guam Memorial Hospital budget that we have to figure out, right? When it comes to private insurance, which accounts for one out of every $4 or 25 cents for every dollar collected, the data is just as bleak. I also have, there's a Times article that was published just maybe about a month ago that I'll leave with my, with my testimony. Urban hospitals and hospitals that are not a part of, I'm sorry, urban hospitals and hospitals that are a part of a large network use private insurance to make up for the 3M losses. 3M, Medicaid, Medicare, Medi, 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 no, Medi, what?
For us, it might be.
MIP, yes. I was practicing last night. I thought I was getting, Medicare, Medicaid, and MIP. Urban hospitals use their paying customers to subsidize the losses from those groups. They have the volume of paying customers to cover 24-hour fixed costs, then the accounting office, the HR, so on and so forth. So, their negotiated rates with insurance goes farther. But GMH is an island as far as the healthcare system, ecosystem is concerned. It is located on an island, but GMH is an island. It is not part of a larger network, so the 24/7 fixed costs are spread across fewer employees and fewer patients. So, what that means is, even under the best of circumstances, where GMH bills an insurance company and the insurance company pays dollar for dollar, which I've heard really doesn't happen that often, that money doesn't go as far. Which leads me to the next question on a finance person's mind is, well, are our expenses at GMH reasonable across the board? When I look at from staffing, how much they're spending on medical supplies and so on and so forth? Well, from my experience when I worked at GIDA, the one thing that surprised me as a member of the private sector that came into government was the overhead rates that are added to an employee's compensation. So, for example, if you look at a security guard, entry level earning $14 an hour, that's about, that means before taxes, they're taking home a full-time position, about $28,000 per year. This costs taxpayers $45,000 per year, which would, in the private sector, maybe at the top end, would cost like 33? And then a security guard, and then just continue that as the pay scale goes up. A guard making $22 an hour costs the government, that's a $44,000 a year position, costing the government something like $76,000 a year. Now, it would make sense if these employees were getting superior benefits to the private sector, but the retirement benefits are about the same. In fact, we don't, government employees don't collect Social Security, but the 401A looks just like a 401K that you get in the private sector. I just signed up. I just became eligible for my health insurance at my company, and my premium is the same as it was when I was at GIDA. I mean, and I'm in a company of 35 versus a government system of 2,000. So, this begs the question, and I'm not picking on security guards, they're all lovely as far as I've experienced, but there are multiple private companies that can do certain departments of the organization, and it doesn't mean that we lay off, because we can keep senior supervisors with tenure, historic knowledge, in-house knowledge, to make sure the contractor is maintaining standards, and then we can start to phase in new employees, entry-level employees in this way. This is an example of an area I'm interested in knowing better, that I'm interested in examining and asking these questions of the management team at the Guam Memorial Hospital. As I wrap up, I just wanted to share a small, personal story, if you'll allow me. So, four years ago today, I was actually admitted at the Guam Memorial Hospital. So, after approximately 36 hours in labor at Sagua Manyagu, I had not progressed, so the recommendation of my doctor was to go to GMH and prepare for more intervention. After approximately another four hours, the recommendation was to give me a C-section. Now, if you're unfamiliar, the ladies may be familiar, the fathers may be not as familiar. One of the notable parts of a C-section is that you get strapped into a table where your arms are spread out like you're on a cross, the table shaped like a cross, because your arms are away from the operating area. Up until that point, I had a largely uneventful, healthy pregnancy, except I was 40, which is considered geriatric when it comes to pregnancy. But I have a fairly calm demeanor, okay? I was not a panicked pregnant woman, but as my lower half went numb, I looked at my partner Raymond with tears streaming down my face, in fear and vulnerability, I said to him, "I don't want to die at GMH. I don't want to die at GMH." Now, obviously, I was fine, more than fine. And in fact, four years later today, we are celebrating my oldest daughter Jenny Rose's birthday, and she's here, she's here with me outside, in the bathroom. Jenny Rose asked me, "What is the leg-" I told her, "We're going to the-" She said, "Where are we going to the legisl-" "Where are we going today?" I said, "We're going to the legislature." She goes, "Is it like Disneyland?" I said, "Well, there's entertainment, that's for sure." And two years later, I gave birth to Ismaela Sylvia, also through a C-section at the hospital. So, I can honestly say that, from a person who has been fortunate enough not to have a lot of experiences where I was incredibly fearful, I was absolutely the most terrified when I was being opened up on that table, getting that medical procedure. But I was cared for by a team of, but I kept on reinforcing in my mind, "The people are skilled. They know what they're doing. They do this every day. They do this every day. They do this every day. God, I hope they don't run out of like some kind of medication here at GMH." I mean, these are the sorts of things. The people are skilled, they're top-notch. I was cared for by top-notch medical professionals, and everyone was a part of that, from the Administrator, Ms. Lillian, to the nursing assistant who said, "See you next year," when I was being pushed out of the hospital. But the facility, of course, is, could use a lot of help, and so I'm here for that as well. But back to that, I was cared for by a team of top-notch medical professionals. Everyone was involved, and I will forever be grateful that they facilitated my safe delivery, not once, but twice, in addition to caring for so many of my loved ones over the years. So, they helped me when I needed it, and now, you know, I'm here to help. I think they could use my skills, and it's, I'm willing, if you're willing to have me, I'm willing to do the work, and I enjoy the people at GMH that I've met so far. I've met Ms. Lillian, I've met, and I know Ms. Lillian, I know Ms. Yuka Rodlin, and I think Mr. Tugatti here as well, and Jordan as well for being here to support. Just, I've met members of the Guam Memorial Hospital over the years through our work at the medical campus, and I'd like to lend my support in any way I can, even though I'm in the private sector. So, happy to volunteer for this position if you'll have me. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Niemandjola, for your words and your willingness to serve. I had to tell you, when I heard about your nomination and it came through, I was like, "Melanie? GMH Board of Trustees? This is pretty awesome." Considering all of your background and your expertise in the financial services industry, and I think everybody knows when it comes to GMH, one of the biggest, biggest problems is their finances. And so, I'm excited to see if confirmed what you, what you'll be able to do to help GMH. I'm going to open the floor to my colleagues, and again, they have five minutes to ask your questions, but just for me, I'm just going to start it off really quickly regarding, you talked a little bit about security guards, and do you foresee any other areas that could potentially be outsourced to GMH? I know there's, there was a bill recently regarding, by Senator Terlahe, regarding public-private partnerships. Maybe if you can give us your position on PPPs or any other areas that could be outsourced for GMH?
Yes, I believe the biggest hurdle for PPP with a government agency is the, it's really the employees, as you have a number of classified employees who have, who are treated differently than unclassified employees. Unclassified employees are by and large like at-will employees that you'd find in the private sector. Classified employees, they're a little bit more complicated of a situation as far as retooling, restaffing. So, if we wanted to do a PPP, I think it's, I think there's a couple different things that can be done. There's a PPP on the facility itself, which in and of itself, a PPP on the facility itself may augment the need for certain types of maintenance support that the current Guam Memorial Hospital has. So, that type of PPP is possible, but you'd need, we'd need to work towards what that then does, what we then do with those, with those employees in the maintenance and facilities? Do we absorb them into other government agencies, or do they start working for the contractor? Right? Now, when it comes to the security guards, there are probably a number of the newer ones that are unclassified and ones that have a tenure of, let's say, I don't know, 20 years plus, that are likely to be classified employees. And we don't just want to put them out on the street, that's the last thing any of us want. And so, there's, there's a role that an employee has to, privatization or a partnership of any department would not offset the need for employees. I'll give you an example. The Guam Airport Authority, their cleaning, their concessions, baggage handling, all of that, all of that is handled by private companies, right? But there is still a group of GIAA employees on the payroll because their jobs are to maintain standards, maintain that the contractors are doing their job, and to seek additional funding through funding with the transportation. So, what we want to do, I think, is really, if we can redirect the talents of some of our senior individuals towards more expansive roles that bring in and help enhance revenue versus managing the turnover of entry-level individuals, maybe leave that to a contractor. Other departments, I was thinking, I don't know, there's, security is an interesting one, I think. There's another article that I read that had to do with, do you, if it is a little distant from the core of the service. So, for example, the operating room, you don't necessarily want to outsource a nurse, although the essence of the staffing pattern at UOG is contractor, contracted medical professionals, right? But ultimately, the further away they get from that, so in other words, a cafeteria or dining program would be more critical to, would be more critical to really think through before you outsource, because every single patient has their dietary needs. And so, it is insofar that a dietitian or the management of the food and the cafeteria program can dictate, "This is how much of what we produce has, that under regulated circumstances, and this is what we produce in the cafeteria environment." So, I think that's another, the food and beverage tends to be an area, that's what GDOE did when they went, went to the third-party provider. There's accounting services- There's accounting services right now are, I've spoken to certain local contractors who have, there's just a dearth of talent in accounting. And so they're sending some of that, they're outsourcing some of that. Of course, there's patient confidentiality issues. So that might be a little bit further down the line. But it could be approached departmentally, pharmacy, it could be approached departmentally, it could be approached holistically, it could be approached as a structure, but not the service. The role of the classified employees, it's a difficult one for me to figure out because I do think there needs to be tremendous reform at the policy level to really effectuate changes with regard to staffing. But it's different now. The worker today doesn't, we have, I swear, we give our blood, sweat, and tears to these 25-year-olds, and then they're just like, "Oh, you know, this is really not my thing." And they leave, like after a year. It's just the commitment is not quite there. So I don't know if we should look at the policies surrounding classified employees and say, "What is still relevant? What is still current? What is useful as we press forward? What makes it more expensive?" So that's kind of a long-winded answer, I'm sorry.
One of the things you mentioned earlier about G.I.D.A., and it's kind of like a box of chocolates, and you never know what you're going to get. With the Guam Memorial Hospital, it's kind of like a box of, you know, rocks. You know that you've got finances that need to be get back in order, the maintenance of the building, it needs repair. So I guess what I'd like to hear from you is, what are some of your forward-thinking strategies to help G M H, whether it's a revenue or outsourcing?
I think, well, first off, I'd like to spend a fair amount of time really, truly understanding the different sources of revenue. So the three M's, Medicare, Medicaid, M I P, the insurance companies, and self-pay. For the first three, oftentimes, the only way to offset or to improve that situation is through rebasing or through capital improvements. So everything with the three M's has to do with being able to bill more, right? And so understanding that equation. I was chatting with a doctor, maybe while I was still at G.I.D.A. And one of the things he said was, "G M H should consider taking on its own debt so that it could put it on its own, its own balance sheet. Because if it shows that it's putting in these capital improvements on its balance sheet, then that then helps to make the case for rebasing." Now, I didn't really explore that that much back then, but that's something I'd like to revisit. If there was a phase, we were trying to build the maternal ward, or improve, expand the maternal health ward. That was through a USDA loan that would be taken out by the Guam Memorial Hospital. Or, I'm sorry, that was through a loan to be taken out by the Guam Memorial Hospital. We had no respondents to the RFP because the respondents were not convinced that G M H was creditworthy to make that loan, right? And so it's a difficult situation because I think you have, so that takes care of M I P, the three M's, right? Is how do we get, how do we improve the payment that we collect from them? I think the way we do it is through discussing a long-term credit strategy, building their credit, right, from the ground up. And then on the insurance side, I would like to, I don't know if this is done at the board level, but I'd like to know how much they bill every single insurance company, what proportion and what the aging looks like. Because if there's one insurance company that tends to take longer than another, or one insurance company that's doing pretty well, I'd really just like to study what's going on there. And find out from the billing department how that's going, what is the interaction between them and the insurance companies, and understand if we're billing properly, if we're, and timely and all the things, right? And then from the self-pay perspective, I think there's a couple of ways to do it. I think that we could try to automate and try to get people on a payment schedule immediately where we get their, like, so when it comes to financial planning, when it comes to saving for retirement, I could go out and talk to employees till I'm blue in the face. But asking them to say, "Save an extra 1% or 2% for retirement," is very difficult. If their employer automatically signed them up for 2%, and they had to come in and physically undo it, then oftentimes, they didn't do that. Like, you just auto-enroll was a very, very, like, it just, it got folks going. Because a lot of times, it's just inertia, right? With the Guam Memorial Hospital, with self-pay patients, a lot of them, maybe they're unbanked, maybe they don't have checking accounts, maybe they don't have credit cards. But if they do have checking accounts or credit cards, if we can get them on some kind of self-pay that is like $50, $25, just get them in the habit, get them in the habit. And once they know that, because I think one of the problems is that, once you have a big bill at G M H, you don't ever want to go back. So then you wait for that situation to get worse, and to get worse, and to get worse. And so I think there's some stuff that is just kind of like behavioral, right? And then there's some things we can do that are behavioral, automated, right? And then there's some things that are a little bit more complicated as far as, you know, revisiting the capital strategy for the hospital as well as their ability to obtain credit.
Thank you, Melanie. I'm going to open the floor to my colleagues now, and we'll start with Senator Terlali. Do you have any questions for the nominee?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. And thank you, Melanie, for being willing to serve in this capacity, again, after getting out of public service continuing. I really appreciate that. And especially with your qualifications, I do share the concerns of the chair that you will be able to help them when finances and just moving forward, long-term strategy is really critical. While you were at G.I.D.A., G.I.D.A. spent $125,000 on a consulting contract for the Guam Memorial Hospital. At the time, the management of G M H was not immediately aware of what that was for, but we found out about it. And why did you feel it was necessary to hire a consultant at that time for G M H while you were at G.I.D.A.?
Sure. Thank you. Thank you very much for that question. And it's a pleasure to be back and to be working with you again as well, ma'am. When we started the medical campus, when the governor made her big announcement, it was a roundtable of cabinet folks, and she said, "Listen, everyone, I want to build a medical campus," and, you know, and she kind of did her thing. One of the things that we talked about was, we were talking, "Structure, structure, structure, you know, land, where's it going to be? What does the, where's it going to be located? What are we going to, who's going to go there? What types of services are we going to offer? Do we want..." I mean, when it comes to, at the governor's level, it is at the highest level. Then when it comes to the cabinet members, now that's time for us to start putting all the pieces together and say, "Okay, we think that this is what would be appropriate. We think that's what would be appropriate." So at first, the first phase, of course, was hiring the consultant to do, that was the Matrix Group at the time, to do the Medical Action Plan, which is on our Guam Medical Campus website.
Yeah, I'm talking about the recent contract.
Yes, I'm aware. And that really was forward-looking. But then, as we were presenting this to the community, a lot of the feedback we got was, "It's never going to work if you build something, and the problems at the Guam Memorial Hospital are still the same." This is the feedback we got from the legislature, this is the feedback we got from the general public during stakeholder meetings and so on and so forth. So G.I.D.A., what we did was, we thought, "Okay, let's take a little bit of some of our monies that we utilized for the Guam Medical Campus project, let's divert some of this to this operational strategy." We spoke to the governor, we got her blessing, we started drafting it up, based off of what we were identifying in the Medical Action Plan, our conversations with the stakeholders. That was what kind of informed the project. It was really meant to be a look at, at the time, if you recall, Governor Liangguo had appointed Director Byrne, Director Carlson, and one to kind of serve as medical advisor, not medical advisors, I'm sorry, financial advisors, to help Guam Memorial Hospital. And so they had given some feedback as well. And so we were kind of taking all that to inform the RFP, and then we put it out, and that was what we did.
The contract was supposed to report on organizational structures, what would enhance their fiscal capabilities and their organizational structure. The due date for that report was May 19, but G.I.D.A. has not released it yet. And I'm just wondering, I'm concerned about transparency with G M H, and I feel like transparency is really the key. The board was quoted in the newspaper that they were going to use the recommendations from this consultant to hire their next CEO, but they will not release the recommendations to the public. Are you aware of the recommendations? And what are those recommendations or findings about G M H that you are going to address?
I'm not aware, ma'am. I've left G.I.D.A. in April, so I did not see.
All right. So the draft was due April 18, 60 days after the contract, and the final was due on May 19. So do you believe that the G M H Board of Trustees, if they are going to use recommendations in a contract recommendation that is private, secret, that that's what they should rely on? Or should they disclose to the public what they are going to be using to hire the next CEO?
I would like to see, I would certainly like to see the recommendations prior to, so that they can inform an interview with a possible CEO candidate. I think my last conversation with Guam Memorial Hospital was that our Board of Trustees meetings are like the last Wednesday of the month, and the last Wednesday of the months. And so I'm not sure if it's on the agenda for July or for August. But I do believe the timeline for the new CEO hiring is, interviews should be taking place around August. And so I would anticipate that the, at least a draft or the final, I'm not sure in what phase of development it is, should be released to the Board of Trustees for their review.
They've already, I think, begun a search committee. But, so yes, I hope that you can bring that to the public as well. I think the more transparent G M H is, the better we're going to all be able to follow along, and like you said, not be surprised during oversight hearings or anything. Do you think it's normal, or that we should be accepting this, that a contract with receivables due on May 19, and it's now July 17 or something, that we should be still waiting for those contract deliverables? Is that how we're going to run G M H?
Well, the client of the contract is G.I.D.A. And so I think that if G.I.D.A. has opted, I don't know what stage it is with G.I.D.A. So if G.I.D.A. believes that they've fulfilled the contract, then I think I would defer that question to Acting Director Tina.
Well, I'm just asking you, is that a regular practice that you think should be done at G M H as well, where we have contract deliverables and we don't really expect those to be held?
Well, I know one of the challenges of the Guam Memorial Hospital has been receiving services and not paying for a good amount of time. And so should we, a best practice versus what's realistic and what is done under the constraints of an agency, are some oftentimes differ because of the constraints of an agency?
G M H, according to the last reports in our oversight hearings, was behind in paying vendors. And this is resulting in sometimes shortage of critical supplies, right, and equipment. And this is the biggest complaint we hear from patients, that they are being asked to bring in their own supplies. Do you agree with employee complaints that there are above-step hires for non-medical personnel while vendors are being unpaid and they are left without critical supplies?
Well, I think it's very, do I agree that the hospital is left with unmet needs with regard to supplies? I don't know if I draw a direct correlation to the hiring of unclassified employees to that. I would also point to other contributing factors, including, there may be a limited number of respondents to an RFP or an RFQ because vendors are, have experienced being not paid timely by the Guam Memorial Hospital. So I think that a shortage of vendors could be a contributing factor. I think certain procurement practices that are, that there's a lack of agreement among the government, among the three branches of the government, could be an issue as well. So I think there's a number of contributing factors. I wouldn't draw a direct correlation to hiring above-step recruitment of employees unless, I mean, I'd like to see what those unclassified above-step recruitments were and if they were, you know, what was the purpose of those particular hires. There should not be unnecessary hiring. I think we're in agreement on that.
One above-step was for PIO, one was for HR manager, and...
And they certainly have a communications problem.
You know, in any other agency, maybe, fine. But when G M H is facing not paying its vendors, this is, I think, affecting the morale of the employees there at G M H who have to deal with the lack of supplies. And do you think, what, how do you think you can improve transparency at G M H? Like, we found out months after the ARP funds were not going to be available to them, that they did not meet somebody's deadline, things like that.
When I was at G.I.D.A., ma'am, and thank you for that, that's a very valid question because I was sitting right next to them when we were going through that discussion here at the legislature. When I was at G.I.D.A., and that was really one of the things that I thought was really important for us to do, and which is why I think, when you work around the, when you work around the Board of, when you work with the Board of Trustees, and the Board of Trustees says, "These are the types of reports I'd like to see." So medical supplies, I've heard the same thing, ma'am. I've heard that medical supplies are lacking. And it's, and then I asked someone, I said, "Why do you think they're lacking?" And they say, "Oh, because no one wants to sell to us." And I asked someone else, "Why do you think they're lacking?" "Oh, because, you know, so-and-so's taking them home to their, or they're a hoarder, whatever it might be. This department is hoarding them, or this department says it's grant-funded, so they won't let anyone else use it." You know, so these are the sorts of things that, if, but if there was a complaint, for me, if there was a complaint that was alleged from the public, and I thought that that was a valid complaint, I would ask for some level of accountability. Now, what I find is accountability is best met in the government when there, when you can compare apples to apples, which means, as a board member, as a rookie board member, when usually, if you have no government experience, you sit there and you say, "I got this complaint that there were no medical supplies. What do you have to say about that?" And then the manager will come in, "Oh, well, this is what happened, and it was a one-time thing." Okay, fine. Because I've been on the inside, one of the things I think I would do is I'd say something to the effect of, "Do you have a budget, do you have a standing budget every year of the levels? Okay, now, from there, can we get some input from the departments? Just an update, are these levels adequate? Okay, now, can we get a purchasing plan?" And some of that, where a board member has to be careful, is a board member does not want to be a micromanager. Micromanaging at the board level is really just, it's not helpful. But at the strategic level, if we're the ones that are hearing it from the stakeholders, and this is affecting morale, and employees are saying, "Oh, and it's coming because you hired a P E O at above step," I can tell you from the G.I.D.A. perspective is, a lot of times, the hiring of this person has really nothing to do with what's going on there. But I understand the general public perception of something like that. Perhaps G M H thought they really needed a PIO. I mean, they sure is, they do have communication issues in my estimation. But I would probably ask for a certain level of reports. And I'd ask for a level of reports, month after month after month, until I was satisfied that that need was no longer an issue, such as the medical supplies, ma'am.
Yes, and there's a lot of unpaid vendors. They are not happy. So please, I mean, we're going to have to do what we can. I'm very concerned. I have no doubt that you can do whatever you set your mind to do. I really believe that. My issue is, are we going to disclose the truth about... the truth about GMH or are we not? I really am concerned about that. I know, you know, um, your affiliation with the governor, and I just ask every board member, when they take this oath to be a member of a board, they are now answerable to the people of Guam. And they have to really have that fiduciary duty to us in order for this to work correctly, I think. It has to be. And for me, the biggest thing with GMH is disclose the whole truth. Disclose the truth about the payment of private, um, what do you call those insurance companies? Disclose the truth about everything. Vendors that are not paid. Let's hear the list. Let's see why. Please find out for us why. And I'm going to tell you that your request for reports regarding the budget every single month, or, or more often, they have committees that they break into, fiscal committees, maybe be on every committee for a little while, because it's really, that's where we've got audits of, uh, medical professionals paid what the auditor thought was exorbitant salaries or double, triple salaries, things like this. But, none of those have really been resolved. So, but I really do believe, yeah, that the budget changes when it comes in here and, and the priorities change. They shift so fast. And, uh, so I really would like your focus on that very much. And if it's questionable for you, it should be open to the public. And I don't think GMH should be acting on any kind of recommendations that it cannot disclose to the public or findings. And why would we pay for an odd, uh, report and not get that report when that's critical right now? Critical. Like, we act like we have all this time in the world to, to find out the findings of how we can improve GMH. And I, I completely disagree with that. And I feel like that's kind of a crime in and of itself, to pay money for a consultant and then hold the findings away from the public. But thank you again for your willingness to serve. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Senator Chalali. And I, I tend to agree with most of what she was saying in terms of more transparency. Um, I did have a conversation with the Guam Economic Development Authority yesterday regarding getting a copy of this, um, this, uh, assessment. And I believe it's going to be on the Guam Memorial Hospital Board of Trustees' agenda when they meet next. And so hopefully after that, um, we can, um, obtain a copy. Lilian, did you want to say something?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, Senator, if I may. The report that received in June is a draft, it's in a draft form, and really it's the property of GIDEA because the agreement is between the consultant and GIDEA. Our role is to review it and to see, and the board will then determine whether those recommendations are acceptable. So that's going through that process right now. The BOT HR Subcommittee met last week, and the consultant did a verbal presentation of his report. The, uh, chairwoman and the chair of that BOT HR are also reviewing it. We provided a response to GIDEA and to Mr. Andy Lica, the consultant, our concerns and our questions, and we wanted more specific and structured recommendations. That's why we haven't revealed it yet to the public. It's still in a draft format. And it's going through all that discussion and clarification between the consultant, GIDEA, and our board. Thank you.
Thank you. But I, I think you can also understand the, the concerns of the, the legislature in wanting to get as much information, um, as possible as we work toward finding solutions and providing aid to the Guam Memorial Hospital. But, but yeah, I will wait for, um, the GMH Board of Trustees to approve the, the recommendations, and hopefully it'll be final and released to the public as, as soon as possible. Thank you. Senator Borja?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Lilian, for being here. Ms. Mendiola, thank you for accepting the, um, appointment to probably one of the more, you know, one of the probably, aside from GDOE, right, one of, one of our other challenges as a legislature, and I'm sure as a government. Um, I don't necessarily have a lot of questions. I, you know, my short time here as a led, as a senator and, and even throughout my young life, you know, in the private sector and just the work you've done at the university, uh, from, you know, I think I was a student there while you were doing the Farm-to-Table Program. Um, and of course, you know, um, the work you've done with GIDEA is definitely commendable, and I have no doubt in your capability. And even just how you handle yourself here when you come into this legislature, you know, I, I think it would be interesting if you were allowed to ask us questions, right? Because, um, you definitely, um, you know, you, you, um, you know, your credentials and your education, you definitely can, you know, you're very elaborate in how you think through things and even your, your testimony and just some of the things that you're interested in. You're not just pointing out the problems, but you, you're able to give us some examples and some things that you're curious, uh, that would definitely help the, the, um, hospital. And so, again, I appreciate you for accepting this, especially uh, under the environment that the, the legislature tends to, to, um, you know, I guess, um, create because we, we create our own, um, environment. But I appreciate you and thank you. Uh, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Porter. Borja, Senator Gomatao?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Melanie, for, I'm still confused why you want to do this. I think you, I just saw you in the hallway. Yes, we share a wall, but I did not think I was going to see your name, uh, on the agenda to, to serve on a board. I, I thought maybe that was private sector would be okay. But again, kudos to you for, for doing that. You know, I, I only have a couple of questions. And I, in, in a recent meeting with GMH, we're talking about the, and I'm going to start with the contracts of, uh, doctors and their work with the, um, with the, with the hospital. Um, a lot that we do is not going to be about money, it's going to be about policy. But I'm hoping maybe you can shed some light, or maybe, maybe I can ask, to look, if you could, at this idea of the, um, of the, you know, the review. Uh, do you think that this is something that you could prioritize as a member of the board to push forward policy that really strengthens this signing of contracts between providers and the hospital? Because right now, it's some of the highest contracts probably in the country.
Uh, thank you, Senator, for that question. And, uh, thank you, Senator Borja. I think you're right. GODOE is a bigger, um, that's a, there's a lot of more challenges for sure. And, um, the way, uh, yes, sir, I think that, um, with regard to the, one of the things, I think the first thing I wanted to address when I was at GIDEA was, uh, we had a scathing, uh, audit on our community contributions that came from our QC program. So what we did was, we, we read the audit, we said, what exactly was the problem? And we tried to drill down. It was, it was really, it was like Senator Chalali said, it was about transparency. It says, Hafa, you guys just go and dole out money here and there to all your friends and malis and paris and such. And so we said, no, 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 we're going to create a grant program. And in our grant program, this is how we're going to do it. And then it has gone, I think we've gone four or five rounds already and benefited so many nonprofits. Out of a document that looked so bad came something so great. And, um, when it comes to our medical professionals and these private contracts that you're speaking, that to which you're referring, I think there has to be a critical look at what hospitalists versus contracted physicians, et cetera, are being paid at like-sized hospitals. Um, I think that there's also, the truth is Guam is, is a, is a challenging place to recruit under the best of circumstances, um, because of our remoteness. Um, when I was at the University of Guam, we were recruiting a new president. And one of the things that I was recruited for was to take the wives, the partners of, they were all male, but I was recruited to take the wives around. And if any of them said something like, ew, I don't like this, or whatever, if they didn't seem open-minded to living in a place like Guam, then we were supposed to report on, on that, uh, for the selection committee. So I can imagine that Guam is, is already a challenging place in the best of circumstances. We are growing doctors of our own, which we're really happy about, and recruiting them to come back. I think the bigger picture we need to really look at, though, is the customers, the number, the volume of patients that, because I think you can pay a, a medical professional what they, what is the prevailing demand and what is, what is the prevailing wage that, that is the expectation for someone of that level. But what we need to do is ensure that their schedule is filled with stuff to do, and they're not just chilling and, uh, you know, enjoying our beaches and scuba diving. Um, so I think there needs to be a real critical look at what services these doctors are providing, and also a holistic look at the money that's leaving our island. So yes, maybe a doctor does come here, and maybe they don't perform, let's say, a surgery every single day. But if they perform one surgery a week, and those 52 patients at one point in time had to leave Guam for six weeks or three months for this surgery, you know, that is, that, I would rather pay that salary than see all that money leave our economy. Now, that is, I believe, if a lawmaker like yourself has that in their mind when they're making these plans, then that, then you can, everyone stands together and says, yes, we will all go and pay you this obscene amount of money. I should have gone to medical school, which is what I say to myself every time I see these things. But, um, but I think what it is, is we, we look at this, a lot of times, we look at it in a vacuum. And we say, we can't believe they're getting paid this much. I only get paid this much. My colleague only gets paid, and, you know, all of, all of these things. So I think the first thing is, see what is the prevailing wage rate for a person who does this, a person of this skill and qualifications. I have a colorectal surgeon classmate, she's from Luta originally, she went to academy with me. She's a colorectal surgeon in a hospital in Manoa, and in, uh, in the Big Island, in Kona, at one of those rural hospitals that might close down. And if it closes down, then I'm going to recruit her to come to GMH. But when I was sharing with her around the time that we, what, that she got that job, I was sharing with her, oh, we just recruited a colorectal surgeon, or it was, I think it was at the time, um, GI, yes, we just recruited a gastro. And, uh, and I was, I was talking, chatting with her about the pay, and she was sort of like, oh, that sounds normal. And she said, in fact, the state of Hawaii gave me this much towards my student loans so that I could take this pay, and I'm, you know, in, kind of obligated to stay because I could probably go to Washington or New York or wherever and get paid more. And so I think when you look at it at a vac, in a, in a vacuum and you say, this, God, I can't believe that guy is getting paid that much. That guy or gal has probably $2 million in student loans. And their families have spent the last 10 years, my, she has a daughter the same age as Jenny Rose. She was doing her specialty rotation while, in Ohio, while her daughter was being raised by her husband in Hawaii. They're making sacrifices. So I don't think it boils down to that number and the number that we all have as what is good and reasonable. I think it's, we all have to look at it from the perspective of, this is what the market norm is for a person of this talent. We're going to do our best to get this many patients to be able to pay for that skill. But in the, in the event that there's some kind of, of shortage in the middle, if there's a, a shortfall, then where does that, is that shortfall enough? Is that shortfall enough? Are we losing money from people going off island? Are we losing, are, all the ancillary people that this person supports? Um, doctors' clinics on our island, a nurse once told me, a doctor's clinic really only needs one doctor or one PA or one RN. The rest could be medical assistants, lab assistants, so on and so forth. These are entry-level jobs for people that only really, um, a lot of times only have a high school diploma. This is an ecosystem that these medical professionals create. So I would really, really, really think twice or three, three times before I turn, close the door or turn away a medical professional, especially a medical professional that is homegrown.
And again, I hope that that policy is front and center, uh, upon your confirmation. So, and by the way, I think the reason why UOG had you do that, because they probably read your 2017 article in the Journal of Financial Therapy, like I did, and said, perhaps, I think I have something for her to do while we're, uh, searching a president. Um, I have another question. The, we're looking at budgets that are looking at, you know, pretty much giving you more money here at GMH. You're effectively going to be a line agency. I, as a policymaker, I'm trying to get my head wrapped, that, I don't think that would be the intention. How are we going to improve collections from a policy point of view, uh, and maybe in your role as a, as a member of the, of the board?
Thank you for that. Very much, um, you know, I think that, I, I thought, it's actually funny that you mentioned, I actually thought about this very much, uh, a little bit, uh, leading up to this, because GIDEA is a semi-autonomous agency. GIDEA, its own funds, it does not get funds from
But if we throw more money to your way, it's going to be effectively a line agency?
Right. I'm sorry.
Effectively could be a line agency at this point.
Right. So, but, right, exactly. So when I was thinking about GIDEA, GIDEA is basically self-supported or, you know, creates its own revenue. We have our own accounting office, we have, and we do our own thing. Then you have this sort of, um, this hybrid of a situation that's going on with GMH. And exactly what you had mentioned, I said, at what point in time do they just become, if all the money, if, if the vast majority of the money is coming from the legislature, at what point do we decide, why don't we just cut the paychecks out of DOA? Why don't we just do the procurement out of GSA? And I think, you know, and I, and I say that kind of facetiously, but kind of seriously. Um, be, and so I think, uh, when I, when I look at that and I say, how do you reconcile in your mind? Are you a line agency? Are you an autonomous agency? And what it really comes down to is, is the position we're in today, is this a temporary situation that we're trying to get out of? So meaning, is the norm of this, I'm here to help you with these training wheels to get you off this difficult, these difficult, hopefully at some point in time, you are like this. You are autonomous, fully autonomous, right? That is the goal. So I think the way I would look at it is, um, I think it really needs a strategic viewpoint to say, is this something that I can see that will not change for the foreseeable future for the next 20 or 30 years? In which case, let's lean into that and let's go down that road. It's a line agency. And if it's not a line agency, if it's an autonomous agency, and say, these are the challenges. I saw that, um, Senator Chalali recently introduced the bill for making public health an autonomous agency. And I remember thinking, what, what was the rationale? Because I've worked with public health through our program and Pinelan program. And I said, I think that she did that primarily because of the challenges having to do with, um, with DOA. Um, and, uh, the volume, if, if, if you can imagine, the volume of work that goes through, uh, Director Burns, this, this agency, they're, they're cutting tax returns, they're cutting, you know, the, the checks for the tax returns, they're cutting grant checks, they're doing HR and all of those sorts of things. And I, you know, so I can, I can see how public health might feel like they're at the back of the line. But if you were at DOA, wouldn't you want to give, get people their tax returns first before grant funding that's sort of, not optional, but it's a grant program. If you get the grant, it's meant to enhance this program. If you, if you don't get the grant, and so he has a very difficult job of making, having to decide, what's the priority, right? Are we going to mix up GMH in there? Because GMH is going to be at the top, but GMH will probably be at the top fighting with tax returns. Our vendors will now be up against tax returns. Our vendors will be up against, uh, um, every other agency, every other contractor in the rest of the government of Guam. So for me, I think GMH is good as a standalone, um, or even as a, I, Senator, I really think what needs to happen is there needs to be a holistic look at our healthcare system and the continuum of care from GMH Public Health Behavioral, and see if there needs to be the exploration of one large system. So Queen's Healthcare System, Queen's Hospital is right in downtown Honolulu. A lot of Queen's money comes from all the other hospitals they have on the west Oahu, they have on the Big Island, they have on the little clinic that's outpatient and all of that. Is that the future of GMH? You know, that's, I think those are the bigger questions that we need to ask.
And thank you for your, your candor. Uh, and you brought up, uh, for the first time, talk of public health. And I think that when we look at, you mentioned earlier about personnel, that there might be a challenge for classified workers to be put somewhere. But I think we forget about a larger system that could benefit. Again, when we think about, like, our only hospital has approximately 1,500 employees, our private hospital has 500 employees, people in the community are seeing that that's a big disparity. And, and what about the services that are being provided? I know it's apples and oranges. It's not apples to apples. But when we think about people, why can't we think about, um, that merging, as you mentioned, with, uh, public health? And maybe that could be a way to, uh, take classified workers and, uh, we still need help all over the, that system too.
I mean, Senator earlier mentioned hiring above step PIO. I mean, one PIO would do just fine for multiple, like, medical, all healthcare agencies, they became the healthcare PIO, right? It's just that we can't, as agencies, agree to who's going to pay, right? And so that was kind of what was nice at GIDEA, because I, you know, we could, first things first, I got us, you know, we, we tried to bail ourselves out of any financial difficulty we had. Then we had a little extra money and, and then it became, hey, let's, let's all help each other. But we can never do that when as agencies, we're starving, every single one of us are, are short, have a shortfall. How can we help each other? We can't even get our own stuff taken care of, right? So, um, yeah.
Thank you for that. And then just one last question. Uh, when we think about the accreditation of the hospital, that as a board policy, I think that it's been done. This is 2025. There are some modern problems that have emerged. I'm hoping that you, as a board member, as you mentioned, a little bit more of a strategic approach can bring that. Um, and then, I don't know what the full compliment is of the board if we're still lacking quorum, but I'm hoping that you can, uh, maybe somehow make sure that, that there's never a time when the GMH Board of Trustees is, uh, or is, is not without quorum, especially to, to do the policy that's needed at GMH.
Yes, Senator. Thank you. I will do my best.
All right. Well, thank you so much for your time. And why serve? I think you're, you're here, your family's here, um, and I think you're, you're here, your family's here, and I, I do look forward to voting affirmatively for your nomination to the Board of Trustees.
Thank you very much.
Thank you again.
Thank you, Senator Guma Tauta. And just real quickly, I wanted to clarify something, just for the people that are watching at home or online regarding a bill that was mentioned to anonymize the Department of Public Health. It's actually to separate their community health centers and autonomizing them and separating it. And it's just an updated version of legislation that was introduced in the 37th that was vetoed. And so Senator Chalali reintroduced it, but changed it up to address the concerns from the governor when she vetoed it and it has support from the community health center leadership. And so, yeah, I'm a co-sponsor of, of that bill, just to be open. Wanted to thank you for accepting this nomination. Again, what's, most of us have said, we're really, we're happy about you stepping up and surprised, because it's going to be a, a lot of work, but we're going to be moving forward as quickly as possible to get your nomination onto the session agenda scheduled for this month, because we feel that it is urgent and we need to get you confirmed. So thank you again for accepting the nomination.
Thank you very much.
And thank you to everybody watching at home and thank you to all of you who were here today to support Melanie. This concludes today's confirmation hearing. The time is now 10:15 in the morning. The Committee on Health and Veterans Affairs confirmation hearing is now adjourned. Thank you.